Well, good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock and it always takes us just a few minutes for everybody to gather in and join us. It's so good to be doing this study today on such a beautiful day. I tell you, I'm kind of liking daylight savings time and it it sounds like Congress may like it too. I know the Senate has passed a bill to keep us in daylight savings time. Starting, I think it's in 2023, right Becky?
Yes.
And if it gets signed into law, we won't be setting our clocks up and back after one more year. Hi there, Sue Dotson. Good to see you on. Our crowd is starting to gather in. Peggy Justice is on, I see. As always, I like to start with a few announcements. It's kind of like worship, you know, you give a few announcements and plug a few things that are coming up. And yes, Becky is on with me tonight. Shifting this class from Wednesday to Thursday is freeing Becky up a lot of the time. Bobby Vial is on. Good to see you again, Bobby. Lynn is on tonight and hi there. Those of you who were on with me on Wednesday for earlier studies, I appreciate you shifting over to Thursday. There's so much that goes on at Christ Church on Wednesday night. It's hard to fit it in. Let's see, I've been in some meetings with staff members here at the church or there at the church over the last few days. I can tell you this. Holy Week services are going to be really nice, really beautiful this year. We're going to start with Palm Sunday, of course. Well, I should say before Palm Sunday, that happens on April 10th. April 9th is a Saturday and we've got this awesome egg hunt that's planned again. It's for our kids, but also for the community. Becky just plugged in and you can hear my voice on her phone as well as hearing it direct. Anyhow, we've got the Easter egg hunt coming up on April 9th, 11 o'clock. If you've got kids, grandkids, neighbor kids, be sure and invite them to come bring their baskets and we'll have all kinds of eggs from the hunt on April 9th. Then on the 10th, which is Palm Sunday, we're going to have some special instrumentation and music. Very meaningful worship services on Palm Sunday. Then Holy Thursday as a service, it's going to be briefer this year. We'll have communion and of course that celebrates the evening that Christ celebrated his Last Supper with his apostles and instituted Holy Communion. The Friday, Good Friday service is going to be something like it was last year, but you know, it's the music has been selected. It's going to be, we'll have special orchestra members and all kinds of beautiful music with that, which really prepares us then for Easter. We'll have the Easter sunrise service at seven and then all the the three services, we'll have an Easter service that'll be very special. And then guess what? The next Sunday, we have Fun Day Sunday and plans are in preparations are underway for that. We've got our our stage ordered and we've got the sound equipment lined up and and we've got the petting zoo and the pony rides. Things are falling into place for that. So make your plans and pray for pretty weather. Community Cafe is continuing to go well. I see some of you on Wednesday night. This last Wednesday, we served, I believe it was 356 meals. Sometimes there'll be a few more that get taken after I have to leave. I'd help some kids with homework help in lead, but when I, when we wrapped up, it was 356. One more commercial here and then we'll get into our lesson. The last week in June, first the first week in June, we have Vacation Bible School and then toward the end of June, we have Vacation Bible School at Bethlehem Center downtown. And then the last week of June, we're having something brand new. For that week, it's an all-day camp for children in our community. It's called Connect Camp. You have to pay for it, but it's an all-day camp. There are some scholarships available. So if you've got kids, grandkids, neighbor kids that would enjoy a summer camp that week, be sure and go to our website and register them. Registration is open already. All right, enough of those commercials. Let's get into our lesson for the night. It's so wonderful. Normally when I look out the window and I'm starting my study, it's pitch black. Here I am at 7:05 and I'm looking out and my goodness, it's the sun's going down, but it's still daylight. Last weekend, we studied Luke 11. And he gives us the Lord's Prayer. Now think back about that Lord's Prayer. We talked about some of the characteristics. What would you say if somebody said, well, describe the Lord's Prayer to me? How would you describe it? In other words, tell me some characteristics of the Lord's Prayer. Don't quote it to me. Our Father who art in heaven, who art in heaven. We don't, we know that, but tell us, how would you describe this prayer? I commented last week, and I say this a lot, that I'm not really sure that Jesus wanted us to memorize it and say it. As much as he wanted us to pray like this, I think Jesus would be fine that we say the Lord's Prayer and use the words that he used. But I think it's more than that. I think he was teaching us how to pray. Okay. Basic components of prayer. Yes, it hits on all the key elements. Praise and thanksgiving, our Father who art in heaven, hallowed, honored in awe we are of your name. Hallowed be your name. It has praise, thanksgiving. It has the request for forgiveness. It has a request for leadership. Lead me not into temptation. God would never lead us into temptation, but I might go there. So lead me so that I don't go into temptation. What else would you say about it? It asks for some of our needs. And I find something, it doesn't ask for wants. It asks for needs. Give me today my daily bread. I have been in places on mission trips where when people prayed that, they were sincere. They were praying for food for today. Tomorrow, who knows, but I'm hungry today. Give me today my food for today. And Jesus was saying, pray for things that you need, things that, you know, not the next want. What else would you say about this prayer? Anything else that you would add? You're right Lynn, it gives us all the basic elements of our prayers and we can pray using those elements that form of prayer and we can pray for 20 minutes. But I think Jesus was also telling us, you can keep it simple disciples. He kind of cautions us about praying on and on and on, using big words and trying to never ever trying to impress people. Prayer is between us and God. I struggle sometimes when I pray in public because it's appropriate to pray, especially in worship, especially in our groups, but prayer is so often between us and God. And so when we pray in a group, we're attempting to pray for the whole group. And we can still keep it simple and succinct and keep it following the model of this Lord's Prayer. One of the other things that I notice about this is I'm asking that my forgiveness be linked to my willingness to forgive others. Remember the first time I realized that and it's like, wait a minute, pray for, forgive me my trespasses as I forgive others who trespass against me. Wow, I was hoping for more than that, weren't you? Jesus talks in chapter 11 about a neighbor coming and knocking on the door. You know, and says, I need some bread. I've had, I've had a guest come and staying overnight. I need some bread. And it says, the person is probably going to ignore the neighbor, but the neighbor keeps knocking. And finally, the person gets up, maybe wakes up his whole family, gets the bread, gives it to him. And Jesus says, even if a neighbor who's kind of grumpy and not too happy about that request will respond to the neighbor's request, wouldn't God, who loves us, respond even more lovingly? After that analogy, Jesus says, ask and seek and knock and God will respond. Jesus's point, I think in that is don't be timid in your prayers. Ask. If there's something on your heart, ask about it. Bring it to God in prayer. God will hear your prayer and don't be timid. Don't pray just as a bit of insurance. Jesus tells us to be persistent in prayer a couple of times. He tells another parable in one of his gospels that a woman seeking justice kept going to the same judge. And hi Jane, good to see you. And good to see you Christie. And finally, seeking justice, finally the judge gives it to her. And Jesus says the same thing. If that judge would give her justice because of her persistence in prayer, won't God do the same thing? God loves us and God hears our prayers. Let me ask you something. When Jesus tells us it's not enough to cast an evil spirit out. Whenever we cast an evil spirit out, we've got to fill our life with something good. How do we apply that? I don't know about you, but I've been a pastor now since 2008. Nobody yet has literally asked me to cast out an evil spirit, but I have, I have dealt with people over a lot of issues where this applies. What is Jesus saying when he says, okay, be careful you cast out an evil spirit? And that evil spirit goes and gets his buddies and come back and now there's a host of evil spirits in you. So instead of allowing that to happen, what should we do? Anybody want to, anybody want to put up a comment there? What's Jesus teaching us when he says, when you cast out an evil spirit, be careful? They have a tendency of going out and bringing back buddies. So interesting. On my phone as I'm, as I'm talking and your names come up saying so-and-so is watching, so-and-so has joined us and and there oftentimes will be a little blurb at the bottom that says, would you like to bring them on camera? That would, I don't believe on Facebook Live, I could bring you on camera, but just be careful when you come online. Christie, you got it exactly right. Fill that hole, the void, the space that was open. Yes, thank you Sue. The open space was something worthy, something good. Nature abhors a vacuum. And so if we, if we have a bad habit and we get rid of that habit, so much better if we'll fill it with something productive and good. Because if we don't, we may find a habit that's worse than the first one to fill that space in our life. We're going to wrap up 11 with verses 53 and 54. Becky, if you'd read those, it sets the stage for what comes later.
When Jesus left there, the Pharisees and the teachers of the law began to oppose him fiercely and to besiege him with questions, waiting to catch him in something he might say.
Okay, the Pharisees and teachers of the law, Pharisees were people who kept their lives separate because they thought you could only get to heaven. That was perfect obedience. So they followed the law to the letter. They separated themselves. They were very judgmental people. Teachers of the law know the word for those as scribes or people who copied the law and who taught it. And so they're experts on knowing the Jewish law. They struggled to follow it and they are having trouble accepting Jesus as a Messiah. As he gets closer and closer to Jerusalem, excuse me, and after he arrives in Jerusalem, these are the leaders of the people who along with the Sadducees, who will have him arrested and crucified. Okay Becky, get a deep breath and read 12, one through seven. Let's jump into our chapter for tonight.
Meanwhile, when a crowd of many thousands had gathered so that they were trampling on one another, Jesus began to speak first to his disciples, saying, be on your guard against the yeast of the Pharisees, which is hypocrisy. There is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed or hidden that will not be made known. What you have said in the dark will be heard in the daylight and what you have whispered in the ear, in the inner rooms will be proclaimed from the roofs. I tell you, my friends, do not be afraid of those who kill the body and after that can do no more. But I will show you whom you should fear. Fear him who, after the killing of the body, has power to throw you into hell. Yes, I tell you, fear him. Are not five sparrows sold for two pennies? Yet not one of them is forgotten by God. Indeed, the very hairs of your head are all numbered. Don't be afraid. You are worth more than many sparrows.
I don't know about you, but sometimes I'll know a scripture. It's like that thing about the sparrows. In fact, I'll quote it sometimes to people if they're wondering, does God really know me? And I said, remember, God knows when a sparrow falls. He knows how many hairs run your head. And then boom, here it is. You're reading along Luke chapter 12. We're done David's Bible study. Boom, here comes scripture that just jumps out at us because we've heard it so frequently. There's a couple of other things that are in that passage. Right at the beginning of it, what does it say about the numbers of people who were following Jesus? Sometimes we forget this. Sometimes we think of Jesus with this little band of 12 and he walked along and occasionally others would join in along the road. Or maybe he'd stop to do a sermon on the mount or some teaching by the Sea of Galilee and and we have this image of, you know, 30 people. Yeah, Lynn says many thousands. It says they're trampling on one another. They're probably trampling on one another, not because they're mean spirited people, but because they want to get close to him. There's no sound system. It's so cool. And we do our sunrise service on Easter. We, thank you Greg, exactly. They're trampling on each other, trying to get close enough. When we do our service outside, we always have a sound system. We'll set up speakers and it just helps. Jesus was speaking with no sound system and so people wanted to be close enough to hear him. Sometimes whenever he talked down by the Sea of Galilee, the wind would come across the Sea of Galilee and it helped to take the sound to the crowd. A few times he got into a boat and rode out into the water and it's almost like being in a theater. But people want to be close. I think some of them wanted to touch him. Remember the woman who touched his garment and was healed? So I think people are that eager to be near. Wouldn't it be cool if when we came to worship, we were trampling each other to get to the front of the sanctuary or the commons? Instead, we're elbowing each other to get to those back rows. I'm always teasing people sitting toward the back about, I don't do this publicly, but I'll walk up and say, did you pay extra for these seats? These look like prime seats. But that's in our culture. That's what we like to do in his culture. They want to be close enough to reach out and touch Jesus, to hear every word that he spoke. And who knows, if he came to Christ Church, we might be making our way to the front row too. He talks about yeast. Be careful of the hypocrisy of the Pharisees, which he refers to as yeast. Hypocrisy, that's something that we people in the church, Christians, get accused of. A hypocrite is a play actor, someone who acts a role in which they're not. Now hypocrites pretend sometimes to be better than they are. And Jesus says, be careful of the yeast of the Pharisees. Now, when he says that, why would he use the example of yeast? Be careful of the yeast of the Pharisees. And he's talking about hypocrisy. But a hint on answering that is what does yeast do? When my mother used to make these awesome rolls, dinner rolls. She called them refrigerator rolls, right? And my wife Becky got her recipe and while my mother was living, learned to make those. They're awesome. But I've seen her put yeast in her dough. She kind of kneads the dough and gets it all in a clump. And then she puts some yeast in a cup of water and dissolves it and then she puts that in. Oh yes, it causes things to grow. And there's more to it. Yes, it helps. It tries to get people to grow in their ways. And something else about yeast, it spreads through the whole dough. If you just mix it in with part of the dough, it's good. There you go. It changes the whole recipe. Yes. Becky, after she kind of kneads that a little bit into the dough, she puts it in a refrigerator, puts it in a mixing bowl, puts it in a refrigerator, aluminum foil on the top. And sometimes I'll open the refrigerator and you get the smell of the yeast working its way through the dough and that aluminum foil has risen up, because it does. It makes it grow. It spreads. The yeast goes throughout the dough. And Jesus is cautioning them that this hypocrisy that the Pharisees have, see, they're following the law, but they're hypocrites. They don't love people. And so he's saying, don't you be like that. He could say that to Christ Church or any church today. Don't be like that. Don't be hypocritical. Instead, he says, fear the one who can cause you to go to hell. When I first read that, I thought he was talking about Satan. That Satan could cause us to go to hell because of temptation. He's not talking about Satan here. Who's he talking about? It's like some people could cost you your jobs. I used to stress over that. I bet some of you used to or still do. Don't stress over that. Don't stress over those that can take away your house or your means or those other things. Jesus is the judge. Be careful. Yes, be careful of the judge because it is. And then he goes on to say, God loves you. It's, it's, God is so mysterious. There's this, yes, he's the judge. He's the ultimate in justice. He knows our hearts, but he loves us. He wants the best for us. And Jesus uses this opportunity after he's warned us that there is a judgment coming. You know, that's something that Methodist almost try to ignore sometimes. I love the way we talk about grace, but grace only comes into play when we receive love that we don't deserve or earn or merit. We're guilty and we are pardoned. We're treated as if we're innocent when we're guilty. And we will be judged. There is no doubt about it. Now, there's some denominations that they don't play down judgment at all. They emphasize every Sunday that where would you be tonight if you died? But sometimes they don't lift up grace as they should. So there's two sides of this. But Jesus is making it clear to us that God loves us. God knows about God's creation. He says, there's not a spare that falls without God knowing it. It's Jesus's way of saying, God knows what is going on in his creation. There was a group called the Deist, D-E-I-S-T. Their religion or the philosophy that they were pushing is called deism, D-E-I-S-M. A deity is another word for God, but the deists believed that God created the earth, created everything that's in the earth, and then God set it on a rotation around the sun and he spun it on its axis and God goes, well, let's see how they do, and just stepped away. And so deists didn't think prayer was important. God's created us and God's going to let all of this happen. It just sort of plays out the way human nature, created nature and all of that works together. That's known as a heresy. Jesus is, I don't know if there are any deists around in the day of Jesus, but this teaching so flies in the face of that. It says, yeah, light out the clock. Yeah, listen, we're going to run it out here. It's, it's, it's in play, so let it go. That's, that's not the God we worship, is it? The God we worship loves us, cares for us. Here's when we pray, knows how many hair on our head. So many people take that literally. Jesus is trying to say, God knows you intimately. I don't think God's too worried about counting our hairs and the fact that we may be losing some each day. I think God loves us and knows us very much. It's kind of ironic, in spite of us, he still loves us. All right. Becky's going to read some scripture now, eight through 12. And if you would, she's going to talk about, don't disown me. I'll disown you. And she's reading post ways today that we could disown Jesus. We're Christians, right? How could we disown him? Becky, eight through 12.
I tell you, whoever acknowledges me before men, the son of man will also acknowledge him before the angels of God. But he who disowns me before men will be disowned before the angels of God. And everyone who speaks a word against the son of man will be forgiven. But anyone who blasphems me against the Holy Spirit will not be forgiven. When you are brought before synagogues, rulers and authorities, do not worry about how you will defend yourselves or what you will say. For the Holy Spirit will teach you at that time what you should say.
Okay, I haven't seen any comments yet about how we can disown God or disown Christ. This is, this is literally Jesus saying, if you disown me, I'm going to disown you. I have been in, let's see, we disown him when we miss an opportunity to show another his message and to love. That's exactly right. We have this opportunity and we sort of pass it by. I bet if we think really hard, hopefully sometime in our distant past, but I bet each of us can think of a time when somebody needed to speak up for Christ. Or somebody needed, that old song about, can I have a witness? You know, situation was before us where somebody needed to witness and we kind of said, oh, maybe somebody else will speak up, not me. I'm ashamed to admit that I can be in situations. Yeah, I'm too worried to share sometimes. Yeah, it's like, I don't want them to, I don't want somebody to challenge me. Do I know enough to witness or to share? I don't want to, sometimes we don't want to, it's like, that's not cool. They're going to think I'm weird. I can remember being in a situation before where it's almost like I went undercover. It's like, I don't want them to know that I'm, that I'm one of those. And then it was such a wonderful opportunity to say, yes, I'm one of those. Here's how it makes a difference in my life. And Jesus is saying, I remember reading this scripture thinking, I got to start stepping up just a little bit more. I still, Christie, find myself in situations where I think, well, I should share something here. Can I do that? Is it a good? Yeah, we have to step up. I used to hesitate. I worked for TBA and it's federally owned, so you had to be really careful about not pushing your faith on somebody else. But I learned when people were open for a word, you could share it and you know, nobody came and hunted you down and fired you. So you'd be surprised how many times opportunities appear when somebody's asked a question. They've opened the door. We can't disown Christ. We have to step up, have to be bolder and ready to do that. Becky read about, you can, you can, you can disown me, Jesus says, but you better not blaspheme the Holy Spirit. That scripture bothers me because I wonder, how do I, or how could I blaspheme the Holy Spirit? Anybody want to? Well, let me just go ahead and say, I think whenever we blaspheme the Holy Spirit, we aren't open to forgiveness. In other words, I'm turning away from the Holy Spirit and I'm saying, I don't believe in that. That's a bunch of junk. I'm not interested in God's spirit. I may even say, I don't think it exists. And as long as that is my attitude, I am not open to forgiveness. If we are worried, if you're worried about whether you blaspheme the Holy Spirit today, you probably did not. I think people who blaspheme the Holy Spirit have a very callous attitude where they are not seeking. It's an arrogance. It says, I don't need you, God. And if we go through all of our life with that, remember the thief on the cross may have, he may have blasphemed the Holy Spirit for 35 years, but on the cross, he has to be forgiven and was. So unforgivable, yes, but we can, we can always repent from that. All right, Jesus tells us, how do you prepare when you're being called up before someone who's going to get you in trouble for being a Christian? How do you prepare for that? This was very real in Jesus's time. He's going to be within, within a short period of time. In just a very short period of time, he's going to be before the Sanhedrin being tried. He's going to be before He's going to be before the Roman governor. He's gonna be, in Luke's Gospel, it tells us he went before King Herod Antipas. Jesus is saying, how does he say, prepare for these kinds of things where you're being, and his followers were being, gonna be called in before the authorities. The Apostle Paul, if we read in the Book of Acts, appears before a number of authorities on trial. How does Jesus say, prepare? To get ready for that? Don't worry, he's saying, the Holy Spirit is going to tell you what to say. God will lead you in that situation. And right on the heels of that, I'll ask you, is this talking about when somebody says, Christie, would you do the devotion for us this Sunday morning? Yes, thank you, Nikki, let the Holy Spirit lead you, exactly right. Go be faithful, be open, the Holy Spirit will lead you. Does that apply when someone says, we've got a women's circle meeting tomorrow night, would you take the scripture and perhaps lead us through a few verses of this? Or, hey, you've been, we're having Laity Sunday, would you deliver the sermon today? Does this say to us, don't prepare, don't read, don't pick a scripture ahead of time, just wait. Let the Holy Spirit lead you in that situation. Speak through my stupidity, thank you, Christie. Yeah, that's, if we do that, it's us saying, I'm too lazy to prepare. This is not what this is talking about. This is saying when you're being called in a trial, don't prepare to defend yourself, you probably don't know how. Let God lead you in that. When you're asked to lead, be prepared, yes. Wesley one day was, had a bunch of his preachers in England, and he was leading them through how to prepare for a sermon, to read and to study and to come up with illustrations. And yes, the Holy Spirit will lead us through our study, let the Spirit work with you. But the Holy Spirit can work in preparation. One of the preachers said, Mr. Wesley, I can get up on Sunday morning, I can go fish, catch a fish, clean it, and have it for breakfast before I preach my sermon. And Wesley said, then sir, I'd rather eat your fish than to hear your sermon. And what he was saying was, you need to spend time ahead of time, praying and preparing and studying and letting God speak through, as someone said here, your preparation. So Jesus is assuring us, we're gonna be called into question, don't worry about it, God will care for you. But he's not telling us, don't prepare when you're asked to do something like a lesson. Becky, sixteen through twenty-one, please, this is the parable of the rich fool. And as you listen to this, tell me what is, what's this man's driving desire, what's his motivation in life?
And he told them this parable, the ground of a certain rich man produced a good crop. He thought to himself, what shall I do? I have no place to store any crops. Then he said, this is what I'll do, I will tear down my barns and build bigger ones. And there I will store all my grain and my goods. And I'll say to myself, you have plenty of good things laid up for many years, take life easy, eat, drink and be merry. But God said to him, you fool, this very night, your life will be demanded from you. Then who will get what you have prepared for yourself? This is how it will be with anyone who stores up things for himself, but is not rich toward God.
Okay, so now, we've heard what this man's values were, his passions in life. What drove him? What is it that? We're gonna read a scripture here in a minute, where your heart is, that's where your treasure will be. Where is his? Now, wonderful situations happened, he's had such good crops that his barns aren't large enough to store all the grain. I'll bet you there were some hungry people in his village and the next village over. He's not giving away any grain, he's building bigger barns. More than likely, that grain's gonna deteriorate before he can use it up. Okay, he was not asking for daily bread, he's only thinking of his own comfort, yes, his wealth. He's storing up for himself. And Jesus is a little harsh, this very day, his life was taken from him. His life and everything he desired was material, and now that's gone. Jesus continues this teaching, but I think he kind of interrupts him, Luke interrupts him. Now Becky, if you would, flip over to thirty-two and read thirty-two through thirty-four, because it really closely follows this parable.
Do not be afraid, little flock, for your father has been pleased to give you the kingdom. Sell your possessions and give to the poor. Provide purses for yourselves that will not wear out. A treasure in heaven that will not be exhausted, where no thief comes near and no moth destroys. For where your treasure is, there your heart will be also.
I had that backwards a minute ago, where your treasure is, there your heart will be also. Greg says this man's treasure was in greed and wealth, exactly right. And then here, Jesus is kind of summarizing that by saying, be careful. Be careful what you treasure in life, because that's where your heart is. See, this man could have made a huge impact on the lives of people if instead of building bigger barns, he shared his grain. Maybe giving it away, he didn't need it, he hadn't, and what does he say? I'll just put more in there, I won't have to work anymore, I can just eat, drink and be merry. Becky and I are, you know, we're fortunate, but there's a conviction in this for us, you know, financially. How are you helping others? This drives all of us who have what we need and more to make sure of. I saw somewhere that if everybody in the world kept what they needed and gave what they didn't need, there would be no need in the world. And that's such a powerful thought. I'm gonna go back to John Wesley for a point here. When he was at Oxford, now Wesley taught that we ought to earn all we can. Hmm, that's a little bit surprising. Save all we can, so we can give all we can, three parts, earn, save, give. Good advice, did he do that? I did some study, and when he was at Oxford, he worked, today we'd call it a graduate assistant, he was getting what we would call a doctorate, and so he was a professor, a lecturer. He earned twenty-eight pounds a year. I think that's right, twenty-eight pounds, yes, I'm sorry, he earned thirty pounds per year. He lived on twenty-eight pounds per year and he gave away two pounds. Now that's not quite a tithe. Two point eight pounds would have been a tithe, no, three pounds would have been a tithe. As he grew older, and he was now ministering in all kinds of churches, he had all these meeting houses, and his salary grew to a hundred and twenty pounds per year. A lot of us have experienced that, we start out that graduate assistant job in college or the first job we had. And now inflation hadn't hit, okay, in England. But John Wesley started out earning thirty pounds a week, he lived on twenty-eight, gave away two. Later, he was earning a hundred and twenty pounds per year. Here's what he did, he lived on twenty-eight pounds per year and gave the rest away, ninety-two pounds. Wesley had decided that his lifestyle, when he was in college, was good enough. We are spending considerably more than we did right out of college. And that's not to say that we shouldn't, but it's a good example of keeping what you need, live on what you need and give the rest away. Becky, let's go back, we skipped over twenty-two through thirty-one, that's a chunk. And we're about to run out of time, so, but read that if you would, that's good scripture.
Then Jesus said to his disciples, therefore I tell you, do not worry about your life, what you will eat, or about your body, what you will wear. Life is more than food and the body more than clothes. Consider the ravens, they do not sow or reap, they have no storeroom or barn, yet God feeds them. And how much more valuable you are than birds? Who of you by worrying can add a single hour to his life? Since you cannot do this very little thing, why do you worry about the rest? Consider how the lilies grow, they do not labor or spin. Yet I tell you, not even Solomon in all his splendor was dressed like one of these. If that is how God clothes the grass of the field, which is here today and tomorrow is thrown into the fire, how much more will he clothe you, oh, you of little faith? And do not set your heart on what you will eat or drink, do not worry about it. For the pagan world runs after all such things, and your father knows that you need them. But seek his kingdom and these things will be given to you as well.
Yeah, Greg says that verse twenty-seven is one of his favorites in scripture. A beautiful, beautiful verse telling us, God's taking care of nature, God's gonna take care of us, don't worry. I wanna emphasize right off the bat, this is not telling us to not prepare, it's not telling us, don't, don't think about our future. It's not telling us, ah, forget about 401Ks and IRAs, just, you know, just, you know, just make it to that time and then see what happens. He's saying, don't worry about it, don't stress over it. In fact, he says, who's ever added a bit to their life by worrying? None of us, right? Worry is destructive. There are all kinds of self-help books, there are all kinds of techniques. I took a Dale Carnegie class one time, and it helped me to read some of the techniques that Dale Carnegie recommended for not taking work home and stressing worrying over work. Samuel Clemens, who wrote under the pen name Mark Twain, late in his life said, in my lifetime, I have worried about a million things, most of which never happened. And I try to remember that, when I'm worrying over something, it's like, you're rehearsing a disaster that's probably not gonna happen. So why worry over it, why stress now, deal with it when the time comes, be prepared, yes. But don't worry over it. Jesus says, ye of little faith, I just converted to the King James Version there. But he says, if you worry, you're showing a lack of faith. And let's take that to heart, try not to worry. Worry can cause depression and stress and so many things that are destructive. Turn it over to God, let God handle it. There's a passage that comes after this that says, if the master goes away and turns the household over to kind of his chief servant, that chief servant had better be prepared, conducting business in the household as if the master were coming home any day. And he says, this particular one didn't, he abused the other servants and the master came home and caught him. And it's a lesson to us to say, always live knowing that Christ could come back. Always live knowing that it could be your last day, be prepared, don't worry about that, we just live prepared. And then this ends, Becky, we won't read those last two verses, or those last chunks, forty-nine through fifty-three. In this, Jesus is telling us that his crucifixion is going to be, he refers to it as another baptism. It's a baptism that he does not want to go through, but that he will go through for us. Jesus says something controversial in that, in that passage, he says, I have come to bring division. Division is a negative thing in a lot of connotations. What did he mean when he said, I've come to bring division? Not peace, but division. Do you think I came to bring peace on earth? No, I tell you, but division. There is such a negative thing about division now. Our country's divided, we're so divided politically. Our classes are more divided, you know, economically. It seems like there's more people with more and more people with less and not as many people in the middle. And that causes division between us. Racism is still an ill in our society, so that divides us. So usually, I think of division as something that Jesus wants to overcome and does want to. He teaches a ministry of reconciliation, and yet here he's saying, I really didn't come to bring peace, I came to bring division. You have an idea of what he's referring to there? Jesus is just being really, really honest when he says, I come and some of you are going to accept me. And that's gonna cause you to be estranged from people you love. When you accept me, you may get kicked out of the synagogue. He's the way and the truth and the life, believe and accept or don't, that's right, we have a decision to make. He is the way and the truth and the life, you have to decide. And if you believe, you're gonna go one way, and if you don't, then yes, there's gonna be a group who will not, and they will not welcome you probably. He's being pragmatic to say to his disciples and to us, it's not always popular to be one of my followers, there will be division. So many of us grew up in homes where when we said to mom and dad or whoever our caregiver was, I think I'm gonna become a Christian. I think I'm gonna accept Christ, or I'm finishing with confirmation and I'm going to take those vows of profession of faith, our parents, and said, oh, good, we're so proud of you. It's not that way in a lot of homes. I have known people, have talked to people, have helped people become Christian, who told me, this will separate me from my family. They were coming from another faith. And they were saying, this will cause a division, I may be disinherited. Wow, but they're willing to do that, they're going to accept, as Grace is talking about this grace, through faith in Christ. And Jesus is saying, I offer that till you take it, even though it may cause you to lose family, friends, and those around you with whom you'd like to associate. Okay, sometimes we try to make scripture all pleasant and rosy, and it's not. It calls us to do some difficult things, it calls us to be counter-cultural. And I don't know about you, but I'm not comfortable with that, I wanna fit in, I wanna be part of the crowd, and we're not called to do that. Well, I've enjoyed this, I hope you have as well. I'm looking outside here in my study, and I can still see, it's getting dark, but it's not quite there. I think Bob Dylan had a song about that. Folks, good night, I've so enjoyed having you all tonight, and I look forward hopefully to seeing you on here next Thursday night. God bless, we'll do chapters thirteen and fourteen next week, two chapters.